Seventeenth at seven PM has been provided in accordance with the requirements of Chapter two thirty-one, Public Laws nineteen seventy-five. Notice the meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the principal's office, the Belmar Elementary School, eleven oh one Main Street, Belmar, New Jersey, on January sixth, twenty twenty-three. Notice that the meeting was transmitted to the Esbury Park Press, the co-star, the municipal clerk of Earl of Belmar and the Lake Como School District, also on January sixth, twenty twenty-three. And rise for the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everyone. Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Sherry Adams.
Here.
Senator Olmec. Kimberly Check.
Here.
Warren Conklin. Amy Faye.
Here.
Dr. Herbert.
Here.
Michelle Lomas.
Here.
Jennifer Nicolai.
Yes.
And here.
Barbara Preston. And Michelle Cartagena.
Okay, and do we have any comments on from the public on any agenda items at this point? Seeing that, then we have a presentation on the HIBP self-assessment goals.
Well, I'm just gonna do it from here. Superintendent's report on HIBP self-assessment goals. Oh, too fast, but HIBP self-assessment is first. So the self-assessment is scored on these amount of points in these separate categories, programs, training, curriculum, HIB personnel, and school-level incident investigation reporting procedures. You can get a score, a passing score is fifty-two. You can get up to seventy-eight points if you got three points in every single category. But as long as you get two points on every, on all twenty-six, consider passing a fifty-two. So this year, we have seventy points, eighteen points higher than the state requirement. And all these things have contributed to our success, PBSIS, counselors, quick response to conflict, representing programs messaging, that's gonna come out. So it's not. Okay. And then clear protocols and compliance with the law. Not sure why it's not. So basically, that's our score. We're above average. We're doing more than is necessary and well, and above more than is necessary. So I think we're doing a really great job and we haven't really had many issues with any additional incidents. They're fairly representative and lower than school self-assessment. So as far as our district goals are concerned, we're continuing our path for a strategic plan. So we have to develop a shared leadership culture, professional practice focused on learning instead of just teaching, to improve teaching fulfillment, teacher fulfillment and student achievement, to work in collaborative grade level and countering groups to develop lessons and common formative assessments for essential standards in order to offer reliable data for student intervention. Last year, we worked on essential standards. Now we're working on those formative assessments that will help us intervene for students, which comes to three, to continue to develop the RTI support for students to provide professional development for all staff and incorporating strategies in general education settings that support academic and social emotional needs of all students. So whether the kids need help or they need extension, we need to know what kids need help and which students don't, and then how to extend for them and offer professional development to all of our staff to create the kind of environment where all students learn how to love those that are below and those that are above grade level. Does that make sense? Okay, that's it for the presentation.
Okay. And we'll have a superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report. So, yes, my and summer academy were very successful. They're great attendance, it went really well. We did have our fishing trip that was canceled by the Canadian smoke and we had almost twenty students come. It was really great. Everybody caught, yelled, yelled fish on at some point, so every single kid caught a fish and every adult as well. We had like four keepers, a bunch of kids caught a bunch of stuff. So Mr. Patterson helped organize it, Ms. Veltre, Mr. Rouge, Mrs. Travers, they were all there and Captain Ronnie, his mates, were really helpful. Our staff training from this last week, our trip, was really incredibly successful. Our path is really strong and I think we're heading in a great direction. Tech Week, we had here, Mrs. Lockwood helped run Tech Week with Miss Perez and Miss Kenny helping out. It was really great. They packed the small caf with a bunch of kids all week and came for a few extra hours after lunch to do some tech, which was really awesome. I'll have pictures of all those things. Pizza party was also awesome. We had a great turnout. Kids came during the summer to have pizza. It was free to them, so it was really great. And then, so it was really awesome. And preliminary results for NJ SLA scores for spring came out, but they're not official yet. I'll share the official scores in September, but it looks very promising, so I'm really excited to share that. That's all for this week.
That's all the summer activities, though.
Yeah.
Nice.
Really fun.
It's nice to hear.
Okay, can somebody move the approval of the minutes and executive minutes from June twenty twenty-three? Ms. Lomas, second. Speaker. Any questions, corrections? Just vote yes, I don't know. Okay. We have roll call.
So, Ms. Check.
Yes.
Ms. Irwin.
Yes.
Ms. Lomas.
Yes.
Ms. Nicolai.
Yes.
Mrs. Fay.
Yes.
And Ms. Hobbs.
Yeah. Okay, personnel items.
Personnel items, so Janice Arcos, our Spanish teacher, resigned, regret. But, really great news, Erin Dillon, who is a previous BEES student, has got her Spanish cert, was getting her Spanish cert, just passed her test, and is going to be joining us to start BEES. She was actually one of Arcos's students, so she's coming back full circle.
Great.
And she works a lot of the summer camps, so she seems familiar. She's been working summer camp for like ten years.
Like she'll be full-time.
She's gonna be her full-time Spanish teacher.
Wow.
Mrs. Arcos also taught her, too. She also taught her, yeah. She mentioned Arcos in here. And I was like, so, full circle, everybody really loves her. She'd like her as a student.
And that's because she's babysitting, so they'll be sad.
Yeah, she went to Communications High School from here, so, really great. So we have an internship there, we have another parent professional that resigned, we have new parent professionals, Javon Sullivan, which some people know, thanks, Mrs. Herbert, for your recommendation of her, Ashley Osborne, Megan O'Chatt, who's Mrs. O'Chatt's stepdaughter, so she's gonna be joining us here, if that means familiar. Don Praszak, and we also have a bus driver there, who would like to prove plenty of medical and criminal history, so it looks like we're gonna have a bus driver for our buses. Substitute list, daily rates for subs, regular subs and nurse, guiding coalition member meeting, which is part of that group that we're forming to continue our growth here at BEES, superintendent to hire staff positions needed before the next meeting if there's some kind of emergency, you need to hire somebody to get things going to start the school year. Parent professionals to accommodate IEPs for twenty-three, twenty-four for activities like the play, if you need somebody, a parent to join a student who requires a parent, we're approving that for the year. Stipend and hourly advisory duty list for twenty-three, twenty-four, that's our clubs and sports and different activities, and then also substitute Erin Dillon, we wanted to make sure we had her sub-certified, just in case her cert's gonna take a little time, but we're getting an expedience, so I think we'd be in good shape.
For you. Someone move the personnel items, Ms. Check. Ms. Fay. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question about the nurse rate substitute per day, is that competitive?
It is.
I was talking to Nurse Black and she was just saying how extremely difficult it is to get a nurse substitute.
Yeah, it wasn't.
She lost her two.
Yeah, it wasn't. We were, we were under, we were one-fifty originally. And with the semi-districts, it's, the local ones, it's competitive, but not with Manasquon and some other close districts. So that's the reason why I think, Ms. Black, she looked at other districts and we're losing the subs, because I mean, if the sub could get two hundred a day versus our one-fifty, they're gonna go there and then, kind of, trouble, so. And that's a really specialized position.
Yeah.
And they're hard to find, so we have to be prepared. So now we will be.
It's even hard to find when you're trying to get agency supervisor, but you can't even get them.
And if you get an agency to provide, you're paying like two thousand five. Yeah, you're paying more. Actually, I reached out to MoAC, NIS, and they were like, oh yeah, we're, I was like, we're gonna be moving our, we're looking to move our rate up to two hundred. How's that compared to you guys just having your, it was, two hundred, you're gonna save a lot of money than using us, so, so, yeah, is that great?
Do you want to talk about it?
Up to you. You want me to take it?
Doesn't matter, I'm having a chat with you.
I got, I got some, we gotta do roll call.
Oh, I know, I know, I'm sorry, we're talking amongst ourselves too much. Thank you. All right, yeah.
All right, so Ms. Check.
Sorry, you took over my roles.
Ms. Herbert.
Yes.
Ms. Lomas.
Yes.
Ms. Nicolai.
Yes.
Mrs. Fay.
Yes.
And Ms. Hobbs.
Yes. Right, here's policy, and when we get to the second part, we'll read this for you beforehand.
Oh, okay, all right. Actually, yeah, I was gonna ask you about the last one. Okay, so we wanna move two groups of policy, one for the first reading and adoption, and one for the first and second. So just real quick, run through school threat assessment teams, just about specifically.
Move up to that one.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm reading them the way I have them in here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, board member orientation and training, that just talked about, instead of during the first term of a board member, it's gotta be within the first ninety days of a new board member, they have to be trained. Instructional supplies, it's just about designating a staff member to regulate the selection of the supplies and use of corporal punishment, obviously there, we do not use corporal punishment, but in the case of use of force where we have to ensure safety, there are specific guidelines.
Like getting a knife near somebody, or somebody's trying to injure somebody else, and we're trying to stop that, that's, that's when somebody can use physical force to stop something.
Right.
It's not really punishment.
In the interest of safety of everyone around us.
I don't know why it's under corporal punishment.
It shouldn't be named that, we all agree, but it's still under the old policy name. Health services personnel, very, very minor changes, just to make sure that the school physician that we have, just that we understand and list the license and the credentials and the contract with the school is included in the policy. Let's see, what's next? I have my notes here. Student health records, same thing, language and terminology changes, just to remove redundancy. I'm trying to unpause everything. Health services, again, terminology changes to remove redundancy. A lot of these policy alerts are just minor changes, but we have to acknowledge them. And then reimbursement of federal and other expenditures, there's a bunch of smaller policies within that, but it has to do with terms and language changes. They're just basically naming something, something else, and basically saying that the New Jersey Department of Education's electronic web-enabled grant system is the way we're gonna, you know, use our grants, the way we're gonna apply for them and use them.
And then some of the federal funds, it's also like you can't double dip, which should be really clear to everybody.
Yeah.
You can't get a bunch in two places to do one thing, because then you're really just.
That was the most important thing, yes, exactly.
Taking the money, and some language on other stuff. The school district security has to do with the mapping for the police, which we already have, David already did it before I even got here, so, we're good.
Right, like aerial views of the school. And then, actually, if you wanna talk about the citizens advisory committee.
Yeah, so citizens advisory committee can be formed for special purposes, it's not required, but basically what that would be is if we had some huge change we're gonna have here, we want some expertise and other people outside the board to help us make a big decision that would be like a big deal, like moving the school next door and trading with the town.
So it doesn't establish it, but allows.
Right, it allows for it, yep. Instructional supplies, it's a regulation from above, the house services, you'll see those other regulations have to do with, at the bottom, those bottom four really have to do with the policies that are above and how to implement them. So it's a little more specific, guiding rules, oversea funds, physicals for sports, that kinda stuff, specific language and how to implement the policy.
So why don't we take a, a second, you go and move those, I mean, and we'll take a second for that, those, that policy item through the first reading?
Okay, yep.
Ms. Check, second.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions about? Roll call.
Ms. Check.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
All of them.
Uh, read either one?
Ms. Lomas, or exactly, I made two. Ms. Nicolai?
Yes.
Mrs. Fay?
Yes.
And Ms. Hobbs.
Yes. So the second one, because it's adopting a policy without two readings, we have to suspend our bylaws, and that will be the first part.
Okay, so I'll read it. Move the Board of Education, suspend bylaw oh-one-three-one and adopt new policy sixteen forty-two point oh-one and new regulation sixteen forty-two point oh-one and revised policy twenty-four nineteen and new regulation twenty-four nineteen with one reading based on recently approved sick leave legislation that is effective immediately and recent New Jersey Department of Education guidance provided to school districts that is effective September first, twenty twenty-three.
So the purpose of suspending the policy is because then it would require another month and the law's already in place, so to modify the policy to be consistent with the law that's in place, we're going to suspend the two readings and adopt it on, so that's what that is. So we have to vote separately on that suspension.
And what, what, do you, I didn't look this up, so if you don't mind describing, like, what is this about, like the sick leaves?
Oh, yeah, we could talk about the policies and do those both at the same time, let's go, why don't you talk about the policies?
Yeah, the mandated policy, as far as sick leave, there's a lot more involved with what constitutes sick leave and its mandated state across the whole state, so there's really nothing we can do about it, but we can, we can definitely talk about.
It's for teachers.
Teachers being able to, to go out sick and use different reasons than previously, it was much more stringent.
How much notice?
So it's less stringent now?
Yes.
Oh, no, there, it's way expanded.
Yeah, so there's preventative care.
It used to be that when you got, it had paused the statutory sick leave, that the staff got up ten days, but it used to be that you could only use that for your own illness and not anything else.
Gotcha.
Now you can use it for your family illness, you can use it to go to an appointment, you can use it for bereavement.
You could say family member is just a super close friend that you love.
Somebody else, yeah, it's very expansive, but it's the law now, so.
Yeah.
And it will impact probably negotiations, because some things that are already.
Definitely will.
Negotiated are now required under here, so we should modify things and not give them action.
And school threat assessment team?
So school threat assessment team is something else that's statutory, that's required for schools to start this school year. You have to have a threat assessment team created, you have all these people that are part of it, whether it's your school leadership, your safety personnel, your school psychologist or counselor. And so what their job is, is to do is to take a look at any, is a threat assessment team, but really it's about identifying if there's any issues that fall under the safety and the well-being of students, to each other, themselves, if there's anybody in crisis that needs to care. If there's any component to how we're operating that needs to be adjusted to better management for the safety of the school. So it's a multi-faceted kind of team of professionals that all have different roles to make sure that we're, we're doing the best to ensure the safety of our schools.
Did you have this before?
No, but it's required for us to do it now. And it's, it's not even like, you know.
Emotion.
Emotion, yeah.
Are they doing weed regularly, or?
So before, it was always like, it was me and Justin, Mr. Marsh, we used to be the school safety specialists. But now this is, now we have to have like a full team, and it's not just one or two people, it's quite a number of people that are part of this team that have to meet and just. And you might identify, you know, it might be a student that you're kinda concerned about, that, and then you might discuss it and like, and we have to go with a plan for that student because they made a threat against the school. And so now we have to decide, okay, what kind of threat is this, and how do we help this student through this process? You know, outside of the disciplinary side of things, too. You know, so the, these people are gonna play, and this is brand new, and so the training is still rolling out. I've been to the training, there's still more trainings, another set of trainings that they just pushed out the last couple of days that we have to go to, so, there's a lot here.
And I'm sure they could move from us corresponding regulations that will be here two years from now.
Yes, so.
And they'll keep changing.
And this is already the first, we're actually adopting, it's been already revised, so I'm sure it will be revised again. And that's in, within the last two months, it's been revised, so, and it just got started and it didn't get adopted yet, it was already revised, so, there'll be some more changes, but it really is about the safety and well-being of our students and our school and identifying threats, and then how, how do we manage through them? They recognize that preventative and maintenance of our threats and of any issues that we see and getting people care is an important part of preventing issues from happening.
Oh, that's good.
You know, and education, obviously.
So do they meet weekly or monthly or as often?
No, it's not gonna be, they'll meet, they'll meet several times throughout the year, there's gonna be a statutory requirement, you have to meet so many times, these are the typical things you'd be talking about. Weekly would be overwhelming, right, but.
Outside of those mandatory amounts, would, would you meet when there is a threat then?
Yeah, yeah, if there's something that's pressing, you can, you can pull the team together.
Okay.
And say, hey, listen, we need to address this.
Okay.
Most of the work that we're hopefully doing is gonna be more preventative, but it's possible that in a, a time of crisis or we have an issue, we're gonna be meeting to see, you know, to resolve it.
Okay.
From every angle.
And then in those meetings, is there, like, when you go through the training, is there, do they teach you a certain structure or process that you, or agenda that you go through in the meeting?
I think that's what they're hoping to push out in the next set of trainings, what their, what the initial training was, is like, what is the role? Who do you want on your team? How, you know, what the philosophy and mission of, is of, of the threat assessment team? Some of the regulations will give us guidelines that we have to follow, and we will, but I think that there's, it's, it's coming from the NJ DOE, so sometimes they kinda keep rules that. Maybe that's what you say. Okay, sure, you think.
So, Fay's moving the suspension of the policy and the approval of these policies. Ms. Check, second. Any further questions? Roll call.
Ms. Check.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Yes.
Ms. Lomas.
Yes.
Ms. Nicolai.
Yes.
And Ms. Hobbs.
Yes. Operations items?
All right, operations. Travel professional development for board travel schedule, the school physician contract with Dr. Oram, she was excellent this last year, and we're really looking forward to working with her, and to request the use of the auditorium at Wave Dance Alliance for May eighteenth. It doesn't conflict with any of our, our current programming, we make sure that we did that. Shared service agreement with Belmar Manasquon for BCBA, that's our behaviorist, she's been excellent, we've done really well. Memorandum of Agreement with the Belmar Police Department this year, every year, what we're responsible for, what we're responsible for in safety of our school, and what we're, you know, allowing them, how do we enter and how do we operate. Remote instruction plan for twenty-three, twenty-four, retroactive for July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and the approval of the district rules which you saw earlier, the board for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Can somebody move the operations items? Ms. Lomas, second. Fay, any questions or comments, probably anybody? Who's the, the behavior analyst?
That is Ally Beliza. So she came to us last year as a shared fifty-fifty split with Manasquon. She's been really helpful in managing the behaviors that some of our students struggle, so she should be able to create plans for them, and many of them have kind of moved away from those behaviors. She uses strategies in our staff, trains our staff, she's actually doing training in September with our parent professionals on how to handle with care, where, where's how you operate with students, what are the prices. So she's been a real asset, and that training one really costs a lot of money, but having her in-house as a trainer, certified trainer to do that, she's able to offer our staff hours and hours of training that not only help when she's in the room, but when she's not anymore, so.
That's great.
So teaching people how to fish, it's a efficient part, so it's, it's been really excellent.
What is, what does the remote instructional plan entail? Is that for like pandemic kind of things?
So, so what happened was.
Is that a remote?
Yeah, so what happens, what happened is that the pandemic opened up this Pandora's box of like, hey, can we, can we get a snow day and just do it from home? And so the state said, no, you're gonna have to have three days in a row of an issue. So for instance, if we had some version of Sandy, and let's hope that never happens again, and we are closed for three days in a row, let's say there's damage to the building, but everybody's got internet back at home, we might be able to do remote instruction on day four. We've gotta be closed three days in a row first, and then you can move to your remote plan if, which would be similar to what we had done in COVID, but they don't, they don't wanna use it really, really, they have to, they're saying it's gonna have to be a big thing. It can't be for a day or two. And so what that basically outlines is how we're gonna meet all students' needs, how we're gonna service them for speech, for their IEPs, for their class time, and so all those components, how are we gonna do, deal with the food service, like we did during the pandemic. It basically outlines everything we've learned, but we just can't use it unless it's pretty bad.
How's that work with the younger ones that don't have Chromebooks?
You do.
Or do they have Chromebooks?
Mm-hmm.
They do, all, everybody.
Everybody does. Pre-K is the only one where it's kinda like, eh, they're not gonna be able to do a lot, you know, in the Chromebooks, they might need a lot more assistance. But our young kids are really good on their devices.
Probably better than the Americans.
They're really very good.
So then off of that, does Belmar do a home instruction for kids who are maybe experiencing an issue getting into school?
Hmm, so.
Similar to like the high school does.
So.
And that is not like the parent instructs, that's the school support.
It would depend on whether there's a diagnosed issue, just like a broken leg.
If there is, do they get access?
If they, if you have a broken leg and you can't get to school, and you need home instruction, we'd have to send somebody there.
Okay.
If we get a doctor's note that says, hey, this student's not able to come to school, we'd have to come up with a way for them to get home instruction, and then sometimes in like in the past, I've also sent students to another facility and helped students that have issues with this, those kinds of problems. And then sometimes they'll transition in and then back to school. And/or get really flexible with their schedule, when a student is really in crisis, saying, let's get you, and shoot back in.
Okay.
A little about, let's get your major subjects, then let's get the food back, you know, so there's always a plan, but yes, if there's a doctor's note, we're obligated to make sure that they get that home instruction that's necessary, if it's required, yes. Yep.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Check.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Yes.
Ms. Lomas.
Yes.
Ms. Nicolai.
Yes.
Mrs. Fay.
Yes.
And Ms. Hobbs.
Yes. Okay, you mentioned the second part.
Yeah.
Okay, and the finance?
So in the finance, I have my monthly certification that as of July third first, no budgetary line item was overspent. And for the resolutions, we need, for number one, is just our bills list for, the remaining bills for June twenty twenty-three is six hundred and fifty-five thousand one fifty-five. Bills for July were one million and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-nine. We have number three is our monthly transfer report for June, number four is our budget
We have number three is our monthly transfer report for June, number four is our budget transfer for June. Number five is that, is allowing me to pay any, uh, bills or make any transfers in the month of August and reporting to September, since we're having this meeting kinda early, we still will get a couple more bills in for the month. Number six is the board secretary and treasurer's report for the month of June. Number seven is to approve the purchases for Saint Rose High School using their non-public security funds that we always have to approve, and then, you know, that's their funding, but we have to approve them. And then number eight is our monthly certification that, uh, for the secretary and treasurer's report, uh, for July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, somebody move the finance item. Mr. Chuck, second, any questions? Roll call.
So, Mr. Chuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nicolai?
Yes.
Mrs. Fay?
Yes.
And Miss Opps?
Yes. Any word on what's happening in Manasquon from anybody?
I just, I know that, uh, we had a meeting this week over at Manasquon, uh, they're just doing a bunch of summer projects, new roots, and park map events and something like that, so, that's all I know.
Uh, in correspondence, we got a card from the PTO, Dear Board of Ed, with lots of field day without Italian ice, thank you so much for your contribution towards the ice truck, it helped to make twenty-twenty-three field day a huge success. Thank you from the PTO, I'll pass this around, let's make a few pictures. Any other correspondence, no? Any old business, if any?
So I will bring up some old business about a sign.
Thank God, we're gonna name the school.
It is kinda old, um, so, as we were doing the floors and we were, uh, cleaning out some things, and there was this storage room or records room that we have, our facility staff has found a really cool thing that I wanted to kinda present to you, maybe this is what we do for our sign, not this thing, but something that's hidden.
Surprise.
It's a really kind of, why don't you guys come in and try and mess up the surprise?
I was gonna say, we've seen that.
So this is just something, it says Board of Education for, uh, for, uh, Belmar, erected in nineteen oh-nine, and it actually lists the, who, the, the president at the time, uh, the vice president, and then the board members, uh, the architect, and I can't read the letters. So I thought this was something really cool, I thought it would be really cool to kinda put up in the front of the building. Not out towards the street, but really, really close, kinda like as you're going up the stairs to the right, I think that was like the best.
But not in place of the sign?
No, so.
But instead of the sign.
Yeah, 'cause this is not really, you can't really read this, so.
Yeah.
My thought is, instead of doing like a sign out in the lawn or anything like that, put this up next to the stairs, 'cause I think it's such a historical piece, um, and then maybe just put Belmar Elementary above the, like, the ornament, whatever that's right there.
Just like we talked about last.
Because, trying to keep it simple, I mean, that, we had the lettering up there, I think, a long time ago from pictures that I've seen. As I was looking this up, I looked up, uh, H.F. Pierce, um, happened to be, um, a actual local contractor, I think he was awarded the bid back in nineteen twenty-one to build the Tenth Avenue Pavilion, I think. And it's kinda funny, if you look at one of these people's names, I don't know if it's Quinny's, but there's Pulsey Taylor, I don't know how the Taylor Pavilion's kinda with that, right, so, I, I just looked at that article, and so if you look up H., H.F. Pierce, uh, one particular article came up, it was like this newspaper back from nineteen twenty-one, and I saw that, then I also saw the budget, that the annual budget at the time for the school was twenty-two thousand six hundred, seven hundred and sixty dollars, I think it was. Saw twenty-two thousand dollars, I was like, whoa.
Even lists the principal, and is the district clerk cute? Is that what that job holds up?
I don't know. I didn't read that.
Probably.
I didn't, so.
That's really cool.
I love that.
So I, I thought this was a really cool piece, so what I wanna do is, I actually wanna get, bring this to a place to actually clean it up, to really kinda like blaze it, shine it up a little bit. Uh, we're, I was talking to Carol, she's kinda local, she happened to talk about it, and I told her about that, and she goes, well, why don't you bring it to a place that like does the gravestones or something like that, right, so. I'm gonna start searching around, but I just kinda wanted your input, what you thought about that, and then kinda doing, and then just doing something simple above the, the ornament and stuff.
Yeah, I said, I say the letters on top would be great.
Letters above the door.
I would.
So, may I ask, where did you say it erected?
So, if you're walking up the steps to the right in that first little section, there's, it kinda will cover the bush that just was placed the bush.
Like, it's the opposite of where the, like, where number twenty something.
Yeah, there, so there's like a historic sign over there, like, I didn't wanna desert that.
Like, on the school, not the board of ed, though?
No, not the board of ed, right here, yeah, right here, I don't want.
That wasn't erected in nineteen oh-nine.
Yeah. Yeah, we can show you the way out, it's right out the step.
This works.
Yeah, so that's, that's where.
That's why we have a fine place.
To kinda like having that over there, and then this will be over here, sorry.
And then we cross out the names and write our names in the back.
Shit, in the middle of the night. We spent ten thousand to make our own.
Oh, you can see, under that plaque, make another plaque, this plaque erected by, put your name on there.
So I just, I thought it was really, like, when I saw it, I was like, holy crap, that, that's just awesome, right, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I was like, I was, I got actually supersided, I didn't even tell Jimmy, because I didn't really even wanna tell him until he got back and saw it, and you'd be like, what the heck is that? But we were just talking about, about the meeting, and I said, hey, do you wanna present this, you know, and I sent him the picture of it, like, when he was away, you know, and he was like, wow. So cool, I think it's really.
That's just really cool.
No.
And it is very heavy, just, so.
Yeah, why didn't you left it, Joe?
Seriously. I see you can even wheel it out, 'cause that's how heavy it is.
No, I, I haven't wheel it, but it's just, it is.
You need an intro.
That's great.
Very cool.
That's great, yeah, so everybody's kinda in favor of that concept.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Any, uh, other old or new business?
Do, do we have any idea if we will continue tennis as like a real team, or do we still not know that yet?
So we'll continue it for this year as part of like the ESSR funds, kind of hourly wage is not in the contract, so anything moving forward after this year, we're gonna have to decide, like, what are we going to place in the teacher contract? What is, you know, got a grip and what's, I guess, had a following, continue to have one over the two years? And then we'll have to evaluate, uh, I guess as a board, you know, what do you wanna do, because it would be an outlay of money, right, from the board to the teacher contract, to have, uh, other clubs add it. What this, what the ESSR money was really good for is to get kids more involved, get them, get them out playing tennis, get them out fishing. Uh, I've got a couple of really fun ideas for this year, considering we still have some of those funds. Those would be hourly wage kind of programs that could be really, uh, a lot of fun for the kids, but knowing that in the future, we'd have to pare down and say, okay, what's gonna have, uh, the kinda following? Esports too, that's another one that we started as well, so we're gonna have to evaluate all these programs and then make a decision about what makes sense. But this year, Mr. Patterson wants to do it again, and he still wants to do fishing club, and I've got some people that wanna do esports, so we're gonna continue to do the programs, and I got a few more.
But like, do it as a real sport, not a club, like, so we can compete, like, is that an option, or is that?
What, tennis for this year? I mean, yeah, if he feels like he can compete, then we'll just, we'll call it Spring Lake Heights or some of the other schools and say, hey, listen, let's, let's have a match, you know? Uh, I felt like it was more development, I went to the Saint Rose Grammar School match, and, you know, our kids need more experience if you're gonna play kids who play tennis, you know, 'cause some of them go to racket clubs in some of the schools, and they've been playing since they were five, and it's like, oh, boy, that's a, that's a really good serve.
You don't wanna discourage them from kids.
So, uh, right now, I, I think if it gets there, then we, I, we'll know by the end of the year, and we'll have to make a decision about, like, where are we.
Start scouting out good players at the beginning of the year?
Yeah.
And is that, and is the tennis club any grade, or is it?
It's mostly most grade, it's like fifth grade.
Okay.
And that's the stipend, there is a stipend for it?
There is an hourly approval, so there's stipends for the classic stipend positions, and then there's hourly approval through, with ESSR funds positions, and that's what those are, so the teachers will get their hourly rate for that.
X to, up to X amount?
Up to X amount, yeah, up to like, you know, twenty-five hundred bucks or something like that, according to last year, so they'll get up to that amount. So they'll have to allocate their hours, so, you know, fishing club, it might be all year long, or in the fall and the spring, a little bit of winter, or, you know, tennis might be more in just spring, uh, but, you know, there's different opportunities out there.
Great.
And, you know, I'm, I'm willing to be really creative about how to bring programs and then evaluate them from there.
Anything else?
So, under, uh, where are you, you wanna say? Are you good?
Yeah, okay.
So underneath the new business, so the Montessori that we have that rents out part of the board office building, their contract's going to be up at the end of this year, they have already come to me to ask to extend it, so. Just kinda wanna bring this up to you guys, 'cause I think it's, it's free for us, it's added revenue, I just wanted to share.
And it hasn't been an issue, right?
It has not been an issue at all, I guess, so.
Okay. Uh, any comments from the public on any of that? Thank you for coming, uh, and then we'll have a motion to adjourn. Ms. Lomis, Mr. Chuck, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sweet, we'll see ya.